The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, amendments to the agenda?
I do have one. Can we add appointment to the Economic Development Committee?
New business?
Under new business?
Yes, please.
Can I have a motion? Anything else?
I'll make motion to add the appointment to the Economic Development Committee.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Okay, we've got some minutes to go through. December 17th.
I'll make motion to accept the minutes of December 17th as written.
Second?
Second.
Additions, deletions, corrections. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, December 26th.
Motion to approve that presented.
Second.
Same question. Deletions, additions, grammatical quick. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And December, or January 7th?
Make a motion to accept the minutes from January 7th as written?
Second.
No corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
I mean, I wasn't here, so I'm not going to vote. Is Bonnie coming in, or?
She said she was.
Did everybody see that?
Letter?
Yes. If she comes in, we can talk to her afterwards.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, I think we accept it.
I'll make a motion to accept Bonnie Rosati's resignation with regret. From the Economic Development Committee.
I'll second that with a drum.
And that was for, because they were so busy with economic development and her regular job that she felt she, like, that's what the letter is saying, that's the reason Bonnie is...
Well, it's unfortunate, but...
Resigning?
Leaves us with physician, Phil.
I think we've got a thing going on down there that might help that. If there's no other comment at this point, if Bonnie can be in, certainly let her speak. All those in favor?
Aye.
Accept it with regret. Hate to lose a volunteer. Okay.
Sam, a little hair?
No.
We were a little early.
We can, we're a little early, so if he comes in, we'll, we'll back up. Five minutes for public comment. Commenters, public is not commenting. Once again, pretty open meeting, we'll... Department head reports.
Just taking care of Rose, working on equipment. Just these little songs are going through a lot of stuff. Half my sand's gone.
Yeah.
So, brine, I need more to brine, but Joe said I'm going to spend them free, so I can't buy any more of that, so. I don't know what I'm going to do. I don't know if there's a way to find me some more money where I can keep going, or what. I mean, I just, I can't, not even halfway through my season. My budget's, it's gone.
With all the choice and everything, it's...
It's gone, it's gone more money than the big one.
Well, good news, it's going to snow this time.
Yeah, I hope so.
Maybe.
Did you say half your salt or half your sand as hell?
Half my sand.
Sand.
And the salt budget just, everything is gone.
And now, if I remember right, we waited for a while to get the stuff, even, is it available even if we had the money?
Oh, we got, yeah, it's available.
Okay.
They just, they told me today that he's going to put a freeze on my spending, so...
We'll probably wait till we get closer. I mean, we're not advocating, not, you know, not taking care of Rose, we're just saying, hey, wait a minute, or, let's, let's continue, you're giving us a heads up that we're going through our sand and brine very quickly, so that we're not surprised.
I need to brine.
But you need to brine now.
How much, how much sand have we got left in Balden Hill?
Well, we got 750 yards, so probably 300, 350 maybe. Teed it out.
We have a pile of sand from before that too, right?
There wasn't much left.
There wasn't much left?
But it wasn't that good either, so...
Yeah, but I thought we could mix it.
I mean, it's still there, I mean, it's, you know...
Just to stretch a little bit.
Yeah.
Not as much there as I thought, okay.
Is there, is there any idea of where we can steal money, or is there any money to steal?
So, if essential purchases are, will be approved, but it's going to be passed through me, no, there's no money to steal. They're pretty tight. DPW's at 78 percent of their budget, and they still have five minutes to go, or five months to go. They should be closer to 50 percent.
Yeah.
So, there's, if we keep going on the spending that we've gone on, we'll be 150 percent over, we'll be 150 percent budget. And then the, the, that general fund where there's $100,000 there, that won't be there. You'll have $50,000 of expenses just blown.
You mean to carry forward?
To carry forward.
Yeah.
Which would trickle down, sorry, it would trickle down then into the capital, the cap, the capital plan where we plan to buy equipment next year. There wouldn't be money to buy equipment, so it's, it's just, if you start eating into that, it's going to really backlog everything. Years of backlog, and we've done well this year, so.
But we, we don't have any choice but to roll, so.
No, no, essential, essential purchases, I mean, if we need gas and sand, we have to buy it, there's no doubt about it.
Well, pray for good weather, but I don't think you're going to get it.
No.
I think the worst of the shit yet to hit us.
Any other questions for Sam, and we'll keep us posted.
I did, I had Mike come, when Mike come in, and look at some of the roads that we had planned to do. And he was about 60,000 over what Joe and I had traded. But he did say if we, if we would give him five years' worth of work, he would cut it down. That's up to you guys, but, I mean, I haven't got any from Wilt or anything. He did book things over and...
Well, I suppose we could, for that, I mean, usually I suppose we could put out a five-year contract, but we'd have to, that'd have to be pretty, it still would have to go to bid.
You'd have to guarantee the price.
Yeah.
You couldn't do a five-year contract and allow a guaranteed price.
Right, right.
Well, he said he'd come in and talk to you guys if you wanted them to, you know...
It's interesting, I never thought of it that way. Whatever it takes.
I think it's a better, because then they don't, you're not waiting until over September to get the payment done, because now they can just book it for the end of June, and they'll be done, and...
Not the dumbest idea ever, but, then again, the five-year plan didn't ever work for Stalin, so.
And we're going to talk about more of that later with the payment plan, so, okay.
Anything else for Sam? I see Mr. Bartomey's here. We kind of jumped ahead of you.
Yeah, that's okay, I was late, I'm always late. I believe my brother was late last time, so we want to keep it traditional.
We won't hold it against it.
Yeah.
So, we'll, we'll go to you, and you can, you can go, but we're going to keep you all...
I know Jeff, I'm at school, and I know Mr. Lulek, I don't know the rest of you.
Jay Brown.
Glenn Travers.
I mean, I've seen your names, but I don't know who's who. I've been on the select board in Benson for, I have no idea, five or six years now, seems like forever, but I've been a firefighter and an EMT in town for 15 years now, I think, so, I'm getting old. Our classmates' kids are graduating college, or high school, which is really sad to me, so...
You'll get used to it.
Yeah.
It's work.
It's taken us a long time to get here, because we meant to be here back in July, but we've had four turnovers and all kinds of fun stuff, and then we missed our meeting that we had scheduled, we had somebody, but he forgot, so I'm finally here. I think the town of Benson would just like to, I know you guys voted, and, and I actually wanted to thank you before we started for your hayride, for allowing us to use law enforcement for the hayride. It was, we were very last minute, and it was actually critical that we had law enforcement this year, and 15 years ago when we started, we wouldn't have thought about having a cop there, and now we won't do it without at least one, and we're going to look into more for next year. And hopefully, we either come here or come somewhere before the day before, but, we're, in Benson, we're not looking for a lot, we don't have a lot of real problems, we, we, in the past, we've contracted for three hours a week, just so that there's a, a police presence around, and I think that that makes a huge difference, because kids, if you know there's not going to be a cop, you're never going to see a cop in the town of Benson, then at night, that's my biggest concern, is the driving and car accidents and, and stuff like that, and I think just a police presence, it helps a lot with that. I know, since they've declared 22A a safety corridor, and I know the Fairhaven Police, as well as state police, have really stepped up, I'm not out there cutting up cars every week now. In fact, we have, we bought a new Jaws and we haven't got to use them, because it's been such a...
Well, we're all that way.
Yeah. It's been such a drastic change, I mean, that's, I know, I know, but it's, it is, I mean, that's...
It's positive change.
Yeah, it is, and it has made, and there's no doubt about it, that's the law enforcement cracking down and just getting speed and DUI, impaired drivers under control, and that makes a huge difference to us, John knows, he's been out there standing in the road a long more times than I am, but...
That other guy, that's older than I am, we're the two oldest fire policemen in the state.
And you know, my father's still out there directing traffic, geez, but it is, it makes a huge difference, that road is dangerous, the more law enforcement we have out there, the better, I think, and I don't, I don't think that law enforcement is, I think of it a little differently, I think of emergency services, fire police, and EMS, all have to work together more now than ever. Everybody's hurting for firefighters, you guys are well aware of Fairhaven Rescue. Benson, we still have a strong first response, but we can't go to the hospital, and, and now more and more, we're needing law enforcement before we even start treating patients or anything like that. Firefighters, you know, daytime firefighters, there's nobody working here, me and my brother are the only two that work in the town of Benson during the day, so daytime firefighters are slim. I just think that the more towns can work together and, and share what limited emergency services are available, the better. I mean, we don't have a lot to contribute, I realize that, but we have a boat, somebody falls through in the pond, your firefighters don't have to, we can go do that safely, we're glad to help anytime. What we've been working on a little bit with Fairhaven Rescue is, our first response is more than willing, we have three advanced EMTs that serve 1,000 people, we're not, we're not overworked, and we'd be glad to come down here, we just have to figure out a way to get contacted, because we don't hear your calls, so we don't know, and if there's nobody at Fairhaven, and there's nobody to suggest it, and I mean, getting state to tone us automatically if there's a serious call is a challenge, so we've been working with the new members, our, our chief, Tom Newman, has been working with the new members, if they need help, if you get multiple patients, call us, we're, two of us are there on the farm every, all the time, we're glad to come down here, we put in a lot of training hours for not a lot of calls in the town of Benson, so we'd really like to continue the contract, I know it's asking a lot, but we'd like to continue a contract with Fairhaven. If it is a matter of compensation, we don't want the taxpayers of Fairhaven paying for law enforcement when they're in Benson, so if it's a rate or something like that, we'd be glad to renegotiate, and the hours, we're very flexible on, we've set three hours a week is what we can afford, but it, just that presence seems to make a big difference, and, and getting to know the officers, and I would like to say that we've had several different law enforcement options, and without a doubt, Chief Humphries and the Fairhaven Police have been outstanding. We've tried several different options and had not great success, but very few complaints from our taxpayers, and I think a lot, a lot less hazardous driving, I guess.
Number one, we're not a for-hire department.
Right, right. I see, I, I understand that, but, see, I don't think of it as for hire, like, I think of it as a, an emergency service that benefits everybody, because when we do go through these DUIs and these car accidents on the back road of Benson, it's, it's not always Benson kids, it's kids from Castleton, Whitehall, Fairhaven, kids go, we were kids, and kids are stupid, and...
My feeling is, if we can afford to go up there, we got too many people working here, and it's time we lay somebody off. If we got, if we got enough outside, that we can go outside and do other people's share or patrolling, we've got too many people, it's time to lay somebody off. And, you know, we voted, we, I don't know how many times we voted no for this contract, and I don't know why they keep coming in, but...
I thought you just, we, we re-ruled it for one year, and then I thought you voted no, we missed a meeting, one of our members missed a meeting, and...
We voted not to do it.
We voted not to do it.
This last time?
This last.
Now, do we still, we still, if the, if you get, there's mutual aid type of a thing, if you got trouble and something comes up, we, from time to time, we still go up there, it's just more of a question, because if we're at, we don't, we don't say no, it's like, if you...
Right, right.
I mean, if there's, there's a major accident right there and you need some help.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
I mean, I'd like to think that regardless whether it's a contract, we'd, we'd help, but...
It's just in my mind that fire and EMS, we only show up after there's already a problem, he's the only one that has a chance to stop the problem before it occurs, and...
Then hire Mr. Humphries on his own.
Is that a...
Buy a car, buy a car, hire Mr. Humphries on his own.
I mean, we, we would look at that option, we, we, we have in the past, and for some reason, I can't remember the time.
There's a liability in the town of Fairhaven, for one thing. And we don't need any more liabilities, that's my feelings.
Oh, yeah, I, I sit on that side of the table, I understand those, all of those...
My feeling is, again, if, if we can afford to go out and do police work for other people, we got too many people here working in the town of Fairhaven.
Yeah, I, I'm, yeah.
What I, what I hear you saying, saying, Sam, is, because they, they voted not to give the coverage, but you're here saying, hey, we'd like you, if you could reconsider, or don't, or some, if it's not in this budget year, we, we'd like, we really appreciate what you're doing, and we, we see value in it, and we'd like you...
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm here to represent the town of Benson, and this is by far the best option, so even if you guys are going to say no, I'm still going to come in to ask, because it's by far the best thing for the people I represent, I know...
Sheriff's Department, this is their job, they're for hire.
Right, and that's, that's a lot...
That's who you should be talking to, not us.
That's the problem with the sheriffs, is they are a for-hire law enforcement agency, and Fairhaven Police is an emergency services agency, that's how I see the difference.
At the expense of the town of Fairhaven.
Right, and that's why we discuss compensation, and, I mean, the fire department's cross lines every day, nobody cares.
Well, it's mutual aid, so...
Yeah, but our first response is funded solely by the town of First Benson, and we've come here many times, drive the ambulance, help out, it's, that's not going to change no matter what you guys decide, that's, we do that anyways, but I think of it, there's not any extra emergency services of any kind in the state, and it's going to be a major problem, fire, EMS, and police for everybody soon, I just, if we're going to support a police agency from the town of Benson, this is the one we want to support. And I, I understand if you guys say no, I'm just trying to convince you, I, I understand your reasons, I, I...
I'm sorry, I'm here for the taxpayers also.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Our budget right now, as far as I'm concerned, is under control, you know, and we certainly can't afford to go other places, we, you know, we have enough things going on right here that's not taken care of, and, and I don't think we should be going out of town, and I'm totally against it, and I'll be right up front with it.
Yeah, no, I, I can see that, I, no, I mean, I...
We're not a for-hire department, that's the bottom line.
Have you tried to get anything from the Rotten County Sheriff's Department, or?
Yeah, we've, we've had the Rotten County sheriffs in the past, and it probably wouldn't be them that we went back to. We've had them, and, and we had more problems than were solved, so, that's why we've had such a good experience with Chief Humphries in Fairhaven, it's just night and day, it's two different agencies, two different ways they handle things, and two different ways they handle the board, because Humphries, Chief Humphries has always been easy to handle, you ask him a question, get a response, I get an email right back, and that's not the case with any law enforcement. So, I understand if you guys say no, but I, I have to come in and ask.
What's the, what's the prevailing feeling? I'm of the same, the same mind, I, I want a local police force, and I want our guys home. And I know, I mean, they're going to go up there for mutual aid anyways, I know that.
Oh, I'm just going to give Sam, this is, you can have this, it's our monthly report that Bill gives us.
Yeah, I think I get, it was the same when I got emailed, when we got a contract, I used this sentence, yeah.
What's the rest, what's the rest of everybody's feelings?
We're up there for backup on tweets calls, any of the state police as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know, I know.
I can, right, I already, we've already, when I look at here, we've already hashed this out and voted, I would just encourage Sam, because I do support going up there, so I would say, as with different boards come in, come back every year, it's not the same answer you'll get every time.
When are you going to understand we're not a hired department? When are you going to understand that?
I disagree, I believe we can make revenue, and our kids live, our kids live, and we have family in all the towns, and, and I think we need to do more, not less, with our community, and not just be this one little Fairhaven goes all the way. I know you and I disagree on that, and that's okay. I agree with you that we have a cost issue in taxes and all of that, but I disagree with how we're going out of here, so, again, we're not going to change, we've made a decision, and I'm not going to make a motion to go beat that horse anymore, I would just say thank you for coming in, and feel free to come back with different boards, because it's not always going to be the same answer, I don't believe every time.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate you guys taking time, I, I might stay and listen, just because I've been on the other side all the time, your, your recent discussions, same thing we're having, but, and I'd appreciate that, and thanks for listening, and we probably will be back, because we haven't found a better option, so we'll keep bugging you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other, anybody? Okay. Oh, thanks. Thanks for coming. It does, the boards do change, you never know. I guess that's, that's that.
You got any more for us?
You're done? You didn't, you started.
Hasn't started, I think.
We haven't started yet.
We ended up, we ended up with Sam.
Well, that was, okay.
Hold on there.
Whoa. Trying to get the horse down the road.
I guess so. Smelling the burn. Okay, so we're back on Department Head Reports with Chief?
We've had a few arrests over the years, a month, but it's been a nice start, it's only one. Ironically, we arrested Tyler Edwards again, which he was, we arrested the first day of 2018 for attempting to rob the Chinese restaurant, he was our first arrest of 2011. So, violation of probation for that. Outside of that, I did put the year-end monthly report with the year-end totals, and we're up a little bit from last year, last year we had 129 arrests, we're at 146 this year, so we're up a little bit. I think the guy's a little more proactive, and I don't see an increase in crime, I think it's just more proactive work from the year before, you know, we'll change the staff. Outside of that, I don't really have much to provide from what team you guys asked that, or the last two years.
Questions for the chief?
I have one. Why are we paying the gentleman that's in the Fairhaven grade at school time and half morning?
Who's that?
Mr. Kerber.
Because it was budgeted on to be a mix of regular and overtime.
But, why can't he just do another regular shift?
Because...
And I guess, I don't understand why we're even there, because Castleton's got a contract for every school for two hours a day, so why are we in the school, at grade school?
The select board voted to, to put out the contract, so now...
It was kind of slid into the contract, I don't know, we see it.
No, it was very, very clear when the jump from 43,000 to 57,000, when we're billing, it was very clear that they were adding that, it was well discussed. So, Castleton now is doing it back up to us, so they're not in here for, that, that, your, your argument would be as a taxpayer, why are we paying Castleton to be in our school when we're also in Fairhaven there? So, that's a school board, not me. Castleton is not, they, Castleton took their two hours and went to Orwell, so now, if we're not around, we just call them and say we don't have somebody that's going to stop in, so they will stop in and we'll check in. So, back to your question, is when, when that figure, dollar figure was put in there, it was based on overtime?
But why? Why can't he just be in there the two hours on the regular shift?
It was based on exactly why you said we couldn't go to Benson, if we have all these resources to do it on our normal time, we don't need a guy.
Then use it, then use a part-timer to go in for two hours.
It's not conducive to have a school resource officer, to have, have multiple people going in and out of the school. Now, we have primarily one officer assigned, it's, it builds a better relationship than having a different person in there every day, being that that's similar with a high school, that those children develop a rapport with that one officer instead of wondering who they're going to have. So, on occasion, we do add extra people, I know I went in and did two hours the other day, because the officer wasn't available, so when he goes on vacation in February, he probably do me.
I agree with you that, that the one person makes sense, but it seemed like it could be scheduled on regular time, you know, that just seemed like a, that seems like a scheduling juggle, not a...
It's not possible to do on regular time, and meet our shift coverage.
Well, I would consider that part of the shift coverage.
Well, it's not when I, when I have a Saturday with him, and that was normally that officer's schedule, so I don't move him, he'll go in and do two hours, so, 30 hours a week, they're trying to cover all these shifts, so right now, you have the sergeant doing it, so he works days, nights, nights, days, to cover our shifts, so that's why sometimes you'll see two hours of overtime. I don't think we've paid a lot of overtime for the time that he's been there since the beginning of school year, it does vary based on what I can cover with, with the full on, and that's why when we did the dollar amount, it was based on a mix of regular time and a mix of overtime.
I was told he's been paid overtime every time he's been.
He has not, so whoever's giving you your math, they're 100% wrong.
Okay.
If you look at the hours, look at the time sheet.
I'll tell you what bothers me the most, Bill, all this extra time, for some reason, there's always all this extra overtime for certain people in, in department, and I think it's time, if we've got all these extra people that we could use in, instead of having, paying overtime, that's what we should be doing.
Can I explain that?
This budget, this budget... All this extra time, for some reason, there's always all this extra overtime for certain people in in department. And I think it's time that if we've got all these extra people that we could use on instead of having paying overtime, that's what we should be doing.
Can I explain?
This budget, this budget, this budget is really, really getting out of hand.
Can I explain it to you very simply? Is you have two of us that work and two of us that eat their 40 hours a week. Not saying they're bad officers, they have no interest in working extra and I can't order them. So you're fortunate, you have a guy that's 63 years old that'll work circles around some of the other days. And as far as the is the some of the part timers, I had one officer said I was gonna get rid of you and he took three shifts this month to cover. So right now you have two of us that are willing to work. That's why you see one officer has more overtime than the other because the others do their 40 and go home. I can't make them come in. Unless it's an emergency, I'll call them and order them in.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yes. Yeah, if we have.
It must be mandatory at some.
There is, but as far as the school, I'm not gonna make an officer go work in the school. But if you look at majority of our overtime, it's all not, it's all from other funds, not the town.
I get that.
Budgeted overtime.
I get that, I I you know, I you know, my usual argument is the bad guys aren't out at Sunday morning at 7:00. But we have a police officer on, so maybe there's there's flexibility someplace. It's your it's your department, you you gotta run it.
And I've been doing that some days if it comes around Sunday where I'll try to jockey them and do a split or I'm coming later instead of being here, say 8:00 in the morning, I'm coming at 10:00 and work 10 till. Depends on the way the schedule rolls, what I have for coverage. Ultimately, again, I go back to Sean Tomasi getting police broke into back in 2006. We had an officer there within a few minutes of being called. We didn't have anybody, the state may not come or may not come because it was a prior burglary. And then I'm gonna listen to people complaining, why weren't you here this morning? We have this budget. So if I can cover all those hours, I'm gonna cover them.
Other questions?
No questions.
Okay. Before I forget, there was one that referred to the garbage on Main Street. Is there any way we can, because they people upstairs in the apartments put their whole their trash in their.
I was, yeah. They're supposed to be there, the the trash.
Is there any way that we can get where they're not putting their name?
I was gonna bring that up on the roundtable anyway, so.
I mean, it's.
Why can't we send a notice to the, this is the the Main Street people.
Yeah.
Why can't we send a notice to the property owner?
We own the apartments.
I mean, we go up and clean up, pick them up and the next thing you know, the folk, they they just take the trash.
Is that where I came from today when I thought, yeah.
I would say send a letter to the the property owner and tell them they're not, the warrant or tenants not to use it outside receptacle. That's where their tenants.
Good.
I don't know what we have for ordinance in those in those lines.
And put dick and bell for the winter.
Yeah, we could do something. I mean, I don't know that we, I don't, um, I don't know what we have.
It's one one particular place, Bob, and it's hard to figure out right now.
Yeah, I it it doesn't matter at this point who it is, it's just that we don't want it to happen. I mean, it it's.
You can throw, you can throw through the garbage and poop.
Yeah, I mean.
They throw them, mail them.
I like Jay's suggestion of.
Just start there and let them.
Absolutely. Go to the.
Let them notify that they can't use them. And if it continues, then we'll have to take the proper action, whatever we have to do.
And they'll give us time to look and see if we have anything.
Start out an easy type of thing first to see if you can get a way to agree to it. And then after that, well, then you have to get serious, you get serious.
Yeah, I we, yeah, particularly with the permitting of ground floor apartments, it's gonna even get worse.
It's gonna get worse.
And. Yeah, yeah, I I mean, it doesn't matter who it is, I mean, it's not supposed to happen. I don't know what we've got for cover for ordinance. Do you know, Bill, if if there's anything I.
Before, I didn't hear the first part of it.
About the trash and.
At the transfer station, not.
No.
Personal garbage, Main Street tenants are putting the garbage in our.
Yeah, we theft of service.
Theft of service.
Okay, so at least we have something.
But if you have, the problem is if you have open receptacles out in the middle of the garbage.
They try to.
They're 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 for public use. Different than like Lucy having a dumpster behind the building. Then it becomes theft of service because she pays for it if you were dumping your household in there. So you may not have much to go on because we do offer the receptacles out. There is what becomes excessive if you're bringing your garbage, uh, sands on, was if you would go address it, like that's not what it's for. It's for you to sort it up when you're off to the.
We had about half a truck full.
So there is a difference, but I don't think there's any definition of what can be put in there and what can't.
We should.
But we can still warn them, we can still let them know and and send something to them.
There may even be a state or you know, state law as well. I mean, there may be something that because there is a difference.
Yeah, if you go to a rest area that says right on your.
It says you can't use it, right. There's gotta be something.
That's why the state.
Even though a lot of the garbage sales. We could, we could pick up pails for the winter and see if that changes habits. I mean, I don't know what you guys think.
Or move the ones away from where they're getting filled.
Yeah.
They just go out to park and put them in there.
I thought we always picked the ones up in the park in wintertime anyway. Thought we did. It's always been, they've always been left out.
For a long time, I think we did.
I thought I thought we picked them up too. I I'm not, I'm not sure, so.
But I don't know about reasonable.
The fancy ones they pick up. There were some fancy ones they pulled, but.
But I thought I thought we did. Well, it doesn't make any difference. We've got a situation, we gotta at least try to take care of it.
Well, I think we start, like Jay says, we start with.
They just, they wouldn't get held up every other day because.
You wouldn't have to have somebody going to them every day.
Yeah.
Every other day. That's again, time consuming where you could be doing something, something else more constructive than picking up garbage.
I I think.
Pick them up.
Yanked a yanked a barrel.
Consent is a.
And you know, if somebody complains, talk to your neighbor, your 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 neighbor's using it illegally or. And we can see, see, I you know, just ask BLCT. I I don't think we have any kind of ordinance that we've ever had to address that it's never been a problem. But.
No, I'll make a motion that we notify the property owners to tell them what's going on and ask their tenants not to use it and explain, however you gotta word it, send a notice to the tenants.
Yeah, I don't need a motion. I don't need a motion, Jay, I can just send them a letter saying, no, don't.
So whatever we gotta do, let's let's do that first and then.
Set us a board.
I'll second that if you want.
So the motion is just that, that we're gonna notify the the owners and. Ask them for cooperation and if we don't get it, we'll get a little more serious.
We'll even put that in the letter that if it's continued, we're gonna pull all of.
I don't know where they're coming from, but that's.
You got an idea what that sounds like, Claire?
I will by morning.
We're pretty vague on that, weren't we? We're pretty vague on that.
I think we know what we wanna do. Is everybody.
Do you copyright copyright your notes?
Are we okay? We're gonna vote on that motion. All over the favor.
Aha.
All opposed. Thank you.
Then we'll send our health officer after.
Yeah, there we go.
He's already been after some of them.
Oh, that was mileage, so I don't know if we can get there.
Anything else?
Go to the town editor, what you got?
He can do it when he goes for copies.
So so we we reached out to the school and we're doing the pet mayor election again. Yeah, I've already been pinged twice by the by the media. Our police dog, Sammy the canine, is running definitely against the goat.
Is the incumbent goat running?
I believe so. I I have I have an email out to ask just to confirm. We're ready for it this time. The fundraising site is out and we we know what to say when when the questions come.
If you could give me the link for that. So part of that, what we what we thought about was having the dog run and the dog was gonna challenge Lincoln and I or anything funded all into the playground fund. So that was kinda worth it, right? Trying to make it a heat race.
I'd bring my dog, but I'm afraid he'd eat him. Your your dog would eat your goat.
If she if she does get a lot, because she will probably not poop on the floor.
I can't be wrong.
I was just gonna say the goat, goat poop on the floor, I remember.
That was a classic act that we can.
I think it was the the best act though was the shovel and the broom afterwards.
Police chief cleans up after mayor.
Transfer station permits, we're a little bit behind this year, just to give you guys a heads up. Uh, last year we sold 367 at this point. This year we're at 328. You gotta have a permit to dump at the at the transfer station.
It's after the first year, right?
We're given a grace period till February 1st. Bev will be down at the transfer station January 25th selling permits. So those people that cycle through and don't have it, she's there to to make a sale. After February 1st, they're gonna send people away though.
How many?
Says a heads up.
How many of the New York State cars are getting permits?
I I don't know. I haven't I haven't been there, but yeah, they shouldn't be getting any.
There's still a lot of them that are going in. I mean, I I understand, I guess there's the ones from Lower Hampton can go in there. I mean, they should, if they're gonna go and use it, they should have a permit.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
You know, I mean, it just, I just like to check it because there's a lot of them when you go up there, the New Yorker car, New York cars coming in, there's there's permits on it.
Is that contracted?
I don't think they are.
I know. Uh, what I've noticed with the New York State cars is they're using our recycling services.
Well, it's nice.
Yeah, they're using their, we're so costing us money.
It's a pay thing.
Recycling's costing us money.
Recycling costs us.
They must have a ticket because they gotta have the ticket.
Well, that's.
Not recycling.
And not to throw the trash.
They don't throw trash, they turn around and back out.
I've seen them throw trash.
I have too.
Yeah, well, then we just have to.
It's better for.
February 1st is.
Yeah, you're right, Joe.
But is some of the New Yorkers got land in Fairhaven?
I don't know. Well, that's the only thing I'm saying, it just, just all I wanna do is just check on and make sure we, if they're gonna do this, make sure we've got a permit. If I have to have one, we should have that.
It's true. It's absolutely true.
I'm not trying to be smart, I'm just, I really think, I mean, that's the way it is. I mean, the $5 or $10, it helps towards the budget, you know?
Even though that's a discount, you know?
And I I did, I got a guy working on new scales, program and lights too, so.
That'll help. I think that I think the light situation that you're talking about could be operated.
Stop, go.
Red, green.
Because, you know.
It was that way at one time.
And he, you have to have a white saying how much you like.
Halfing?
Halfing, say to them all. So that way they know.
They know what they pay.
What they're paying for.
Yeah, I understand your reason.
What else you got?
All right, tax sales, we ended up selling only two of the six. I have seen one young lady, she asked for the total to redeem her property yesterday, so hopefully we can get that back to her. Property on Green, just a bare land that they haven't reached back out, they're off the map.
Beverly told me who bought that.
Who?
Who paid the tax on it in tax sale, anyway.
Okay.
And I know what his point is, so.
I wouldn't spread rumors, Joe.
No, but I'm just saying.
I don't think it matters.
Doesn't matter.
DPW's doing a great job with the roads. Uh, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but they're they are clear. Going from my house to Middletown Springs, Fairhaven's great, New York's great. We're a little iffy and then we get to Middletown Springs and it's great, so. Wonderful job by DPW.
We wish we had more money for you. So you can keep up the good work.
We'll figure it out. The engineers, the engineers coming back to look at town hall again, we need to look at the beams above the fire station. Seal Hunt, I don't know if you guys saw in the newspaper.
I did.
Yep, Seal was honored by the governor for her commitment to Fairhaven and her volunteerism, which was really nice.
She works harder than.
She she does.
And the lady sitting beside you works harder than the stuff also.
Yes, she does.
You're you're, you do a lot in town, you you does not recognize.
Thank you.
We could get you to sell 50/50 tickets here maybe.
I'd get, oh, yeah. Sell 50/50 tickets to support the police.
Town Hall RFP, I'm still working on it. Mr. Ferguson's helped helped me out with some language. I'm not ashamed to admit, this is a, it's a big, it's a big complicated piece of paper that I'm trying to get out for an RFP. It's a little over my head, so I'm reaching out for some help. Adam Street Bridge, I got one grant written for it, the other one I'm working on now. The idea is to get three funding sources instead of just one.
That's okay that they know that they're not, they're not the exclusive funding and they're not, they're gonna, it's not a problem.
No. The guy I've been working with at EDA, he's he's out of DC, but he's, I'm not holding it against him. He's very flexible and helping, he's kinda helping me along the way. A great guy. Uh, water bottling grant, we'll talk about that today. Parade committee's doing great. Uh, we have a Fairhaven Fridays committee. We're pulling together that wine and cheese tasting that was so great last year.
That was.
The the welcome packets are going out. We had 32 new new households come to town last year. We're gonna start doing that on a monthly basis, so waiting a year is too long. The grant competition, so remember the brewery got that money last year? I wanna announce that earlier in the coming 2020. And then hopefully we get more Fairhaven businesses involved and then bring that to the board. It'd be nice if we had more than just one company.
It, you might wanna get kind of expedite that so it's ahead of the building season.
Yes.
You know, so so you know, we're, everybody's got an idea if they'll, if they can use it to help. We have the same kind of money for this year to to distribute?
That's the state thing, yes. Hopefully they give us more.
Yeah, but but it's it's guaranteed that there'd be something.
Yeah, it's they do this every year at the same time and it's usually the same pot of money, at least the last three years.
Seems like when you told us that it was like a three year, a three year program, you're almost guaranteed the same money for at least three years, I assume, right? I mean, when you're talking about that, or is that, was that another grant?
Must be something different.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it was.
I know there was something that was whatever.
I'd like to have more money.
We all wish we had more money.
Oh, Todd started down at the wastewater plant, the new, the new Peter. He started down, I met with Pete, he said he's doing a great job, he's catching on very quickly. The biggest concern I had was personalities and they're they're meshing well. So so far, so good. Uh, grade school, we can use their gym for our meeting.
Nice one.
Yeah, right. And tomorrow I have to go to court. Uh, Mr. Grignier was charged with stealing some water from us down here from 30 South Main. So I'm going to court to try to get some of that back.
Use the water?
I'm 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 still going, hang on, hang on. Okay, Scott Hill paving grant is in the process, Jim's gonna fill that out. Bridge grant talked about. And I did a six month budget review, like I do every year. Everybody's doing pretty good. O and O's is looking good at 53%. O and Os is looking good at fifty-three percent, revenues are at about eighty-eight percent. Water's a little ahead of schedule, they're at sixty-nine percent spent, revenues were good, sewer's in good shape, and DPW is a little over. I did lock their budget down for any kind of other purchases, but, again, things that are needed, salt, sand, fuel, that stuff we have to buy, there's no doubt about it. Okay, and that's it.
I saw Tom today, and he said they're, they're up to like, they only have like two hundred meters left to change?
I didn't get the, uh, the total, so I don't know, but if Tom sells.
I was talking to him earlier, and he said he thought they're down, you know, a little bit more than two hundred, maybe, but I thought, I think they've done a terrific job getting as many changes they have.
Absolutely.
And he, and the way he said it, he wants to try to get them done because to get the whole system working and get everything, it'd be, make things a lot easier. But they're trying, I mean, you know, the people aren't calling, I mean, there's some people, you know, he calls and they don't call back, and
Yep.
He's trying to get in there, but he's done a great job, and I think they should be.
Is it gonna come to, the point where we tell them we have to do something different if they aren't gonna give us a chance to get in and put a meter in?
Probably.
Yeah, I, I, I think we, um.
Talked about waiting.
Well, yeah.
We're not away forever.
One more quarter, I, I would think springtime, but I saw that you put something on Facebook, or not Facebook, but, uh, the, the website.
I thought you looked through.
And somebody did about needing to get into people's houses, and that's, that's important, I mean.
When's our next water bill?
People have to get there.
Next water bill is March.
March.
We talked about putting a.
Putting something in there that says this is what's gonna happen.
If not, we're gonna Harry Waterhouse you.
Or.
Do you okay job? Just show up.
Waterhouse.
Do, do we know? Yeah, do we? Why, I mean, what, what the reason is why, is it because they're working and they just, nobody can be there to let them in? And we may have to be a little more innovative with, with putting some of these in on after five o'clock or on a Saturday, because I can understand someone saying, hey, look, I, I gotta, I gotta get a paycheck. I can't be sitting home waiting for someone to come put a, put a meter in, uh, either.
Those guys seem to be pretty flexible.
They're so, but, 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 I mean, I, I hear about the ones we're not going, and I'm saying, but I, what I haven't heard is
Why?
Why?
Well, they're not calling.
I think they're just not responding.
Not responding to.
From experience, when they change my meters, they told me they're gonna be there at nine o'clock in the morning, and that five minutes of nine, you're sitting in the truck.
Yeah.
I mean, they're very, I think the guys are very, they're there, I mean, it's, and he told me today, they can change, they got it down, so they can change in fifteen minutes.
Yeah, oh, oh, yeah, I, I'm just, it just bothers me if it's that, everything's that smooth, why isn't it happening?
You'll probably find that those guys think that their water bill's gonna fall.
That's what it is.
They, they don't wanna say, okay, come in and change my meter, cause they think the water bill's gonna fall.
Yeah, I kinda wish they hadn't changed one of them.
There might be a couple of people too that have odd things in there, so they don't wanna show you too.
Right, they may have the, a little different hookup, I, I get, I, I just want, okay.
Let's do that, like we said, we'll put, put a notice in.
So, yeah, for the next, the next willing, we'll put something in, it's, we're gonna have to do something different.
We'll, uh, I'll bring it to the board and see if you guys wanna do a, a small fine, or shut off.
We talked about, you know, we gotta, we gotta change them, and, you know, it, it's, I don't wanna pay any more money either, but.
Let's go to March, see how many they get.
And then the final, just put it in, they have to have it changed before, it's gotta be in by, whether following, by following, by June.
By June.
By June, it's gotta, they gotta.
By June, if it's not in, there'll be a.
Then there'll be a fine or whatever.
Make some sort of action.
Well, if we shut it out, we definitely can get to their, their attention.
Yeah.
Maybe that's.
Will it go up for me?
Maybe that's better than charging the money.
Shut off for me?
I don't know.
Is that legal?
Well, that's what I'm saying, we, that would be, to me, shut off is, is the, we hold all the cards, but you don't have kids not have baths and everything else because you went and shut the thing off because someone had a misunderstanding.
That's my fault.
If you have another six months, I'll bet you it'll mostly sound.
Yeah.
And they'll be handful, and maybe Joel will have to call.
They don't go out with a handful.
Yep.
A notice in the, in the bill.
Okay, so. Anything else, sir?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right.
Uh, old business, a review of the twenty-twenty warning. So as far as I know, we're not, we're not expecting any more petitions, uh, for requests for funds. The budget was approved, the revenue was approved, and this guy is good to go barring anybody else, barring anybody else putting in a petition.
When's that date?
Six, Thursday, sixteen, so.
Special meeting, if you get another?
Special meeting at, well, we have a meeting for this, there's a special meeting scheduled to sign the warning. So, I, I will need though from the board, uh, unless there is enough signatures for the rescue squad, uh, I will need a petition or a vote from the board to put their article on this.
Well, I thought we got.
I thought we didn't need. I'd, I'd make a motion to approve, put them on the warning. I, I, I thought that last March, they, we, the voters said yes to go in three years without having to put back in with a petition.
Three or five?
Five, it might have been five, I, I can go in.
Cause it was the same as the tax.
But they.
But, yeah, yes, they did. So the voters did do that, but those are suggestions only, so the board doesn't have to follow that. Um, just to cover our butts, we, I would appreciate a vote.
There's a motion on.
I made a motion, I told Dog. Article five, so the voters of Fairhaven vote appropriated the summer fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, the sum of fifty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars for support of the rescue squad. I was thinking that.
Any discussion? We're essentially allowing Article five to be on the, on the.
Right.
All over the paper?
All right.
With a vote?
Going back, going back to when did we do that? Five, six, seven?
Well, yeah, but that's not, if you listen, what Joe said.
What he was saying is he wanted authorities just to have it on the warning.
But anyway.
So, if there are any serious problems with the warning that you see, speak now or forever hold your peace, I mean, we will, we will have the opportunity on Thursday to, to adjust, but.
All right, I remember. Don't do anything else, you know?
I don't think so. Did I go wrong with that?
Um, no. It's in the wish list. Coming.
The only, the only questions that I had, cause I guess this can change since I was here, but, um, on Article eighteen, before, we talked about that being for Carnarvon Street, you're just doing it to add into the paving budget, that's all you're gonna do, and then go from there. You're not gonna specify a street that we have to use it, okay? I think that's a better idea.
That's what everybody.
That way we can do what we have to do.
Okay.
We have to sign this thing, though?
No, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna do that Thursday.
Okay.
If that's okay with everybody?
Yep.
So Thursday at seven, right?
Jay said you might delay.
I should be back by then, I told.
We're not gonna be here long.
I didn't realize there was a meeting, so I took a trip, so.
All right. Okay, uh, the paving schedule is up.
So, you color-coded that guy? It's, yeah.
How come this back page is all red?
Dirt roads, John.
Doesn't require paving.
Isn't that what?
Is that, is that out ten years?
I just wanted to get you going, Dave.
The, the, the second page is out ten years.
Dirt roads. True.
I.
Come on, let me answer.
Does that work?
Yes, yeah.
I only had, it looked really good, I only had one question when I went through and looked through, uh, everything here, I think we talked to you about. I didn't see Scotch Hill, and I know you said we put in for a grant for Scotch Hill, but you don't automatically get grants, in my opinion. So I wanna see Scotch Hill somewhere, and, and with the shape that Scotch Hill's in, if we don't get the grant, I wanted to understand why, cause I think it's gonna be some pretty good money if we don't get the grant to do, and we probably have to be done piecemeal or whatever, but then, uh, putting it, where would, where would Scotch Hill sit in the planning, or like, for example, I look at Swamp Road Perry that sits in there, and I'd be saying, okay, I'd wanna be part of a discussion that said if we don't get the grant, Scotch, why doesn't Scotch Hill need to be done more than Swamp Road?
Scotch Hill will take her entire budget and more.
Yep, but, but.
I think Scotch, Scotch Hill should be put right to dirt.
But, but.
Should be ground, should be ground and started over, just like, what, mull magnet?
I stop and look and say, our taxpayers in this town pay pretty good money for the property taxes to, and they don't expect much, they expect a road. I look at the taxes that are paid on Scotch Hill Road up through here, and what we give them for a road is embarrassing.
I think, I think you're wrong, actually.
I think half the road is pretty good, get to the top of the hill, and, and it's nothing but solid potholes all the way, I'm surprised.
Well, you get, you get up.
You could just overlay.
Just, you're just lapping, I've seen them go in and take the sides and just put some stuff down, lap down, that it's whole point being Scotch Hill is nowhere here, and even though it's big money, the taxpayers pay big money in taxes that live up on Scotch Hill, and they expect better care of a road.
So they get better roads?
No, they expect a road to be at least as good as everybody else here, and like, would like to be half as good as Southside.
One of the things I think about Scotch Hill too.
I thought we had Scotch Hill.
No, that's, I, one of the things about Scotch Hill, and I think this is something we, we get to our legislators, it's the main road to the state park.
State park?
That's true. And I think that's, we, we should, we should be compensated for that, and that.
And, and it's probably one of the most dangerous roads in the state of Vermont.
Well, I don't know about that, but, um.
Well, there's a quarry hole right on the edge of it.
If the quarry falls in.
That ain't gonna happen.
But I, I, I know what you're saying, but it, I mean, it's legitimate concern.
Not to take away from the fact, I think it's a good, I'm, I'm one of the people that were whining most of the summer about wanting a paving schedule. I like the product, I'm just.
But you have to understand too, when we discuss paving, we discussed doing the small streets on, on this end of town, that was one of the things. You know, this is what he's talking here, is all is the shorter streets. That was the process that we talked about, trying to take care of like Second Street, First Street.
Furnace.
You know, that's, that's where, that's where the whole thing was, was really where we're concentrating on trying to get these side streets done to take care of them, like Pine Street, Pine Street's gotta be done, I don't care.
Agreed.
Probably do Pine Street.
Agreed, Pine Street.
Uh, mechanic's street's gotta be done, because of the traffic that's up there, and you go up there now, and it's so hard now, cause they're running all the traffic out to high school that way. And, and it's really bad, and kids are still trying to walk up that street, and it really needs to be taken care of, you know, and but that's, I mean, that's why I think we, we're looking at the schedule way he's done it.
Mm-hmm.
Because that was how we talked about it, was concentrating on our shorter streets, and trying to get as much done with the money we had. I mean, if they do this extra fifty thousand, maybe we can shim Scotch Hill, or, or the worst part of it, or something, you know? That means it's up to the taxpayers, if they wanna, if they wanna do the fifth, extra money.
I mean, I, I, I get ya, I, I get ya, I just don't think, I don't, I actually think it's as bad as, as you're saying, but.
Until we did the patching from, you, you were lucky to keep your car in the road until we, when we patched, finally patched the holes on the last half Scotch Hill this summer. It was, you could, you could lose a ton.
Well, you have to understand, we're trying to catch up on many years.
Yeah.
I, I'm, and again, don't wanna take away from the topic that says paving schedule looks pretty good, it looks like we forgot Scotch Hill Road, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say, I, if it, I, it's nowhere on the sheet.
And if we don't get the, if we don't get the grant, then it has to get plugged in, there is that.
And I intentionally left it off the paving schedule, because it is, it's our biggest beast right now. What I imagined happening was that if we, if we did capture that hundred and seventy-five from the, but I think.
Anyway, sir.
If, if we did capture that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the state,
they're gonna move.
Then, then you can just plug Scotch Hill in, whether it be this year, next year, or the year after, but
Whenever they got.
Whenever you get the money, then you just kinda gotta jump on it, cause that money's coming, cause the state cycles, cycles towns through their grant process. We just don't know when they're gonna give it to us.
When was the last time we got some?
I don't know, John.
Couple, three years ago?
Yeah.
We got, we got a blast.
Maybe a while, yeah, I guess so.
I think it was in Wood Street.
Yeah, that was it.
See, that's the trouble with these grants, you only get, cause this one, Wall Street, and Scotch Hill, where you can get a grant. Cause it's, that'd be a class two.
That's the last road, yeah. Yeah, the limit is pretty limited on what you're gonna get.
Right. And you keep putting in every year, but then you try to put them on the set.
Let's, I wonder if. Let's be aware that that's a, a glaring omission if we don't get it, and we have to figure a way to put it in.
But when he's doing the grant for Scotch Hill, if he might kinda slide it in there that it's a main thorough driving to the state park. I mean, it, it might make a difference if they look at it.
For.
If they don't have to put money out and you get a grant money for it, you know, the state might not have.
They don't know that the park's on there in Scotch Hill.
Right, but, you know, but you, it still is a main drive.
If you put, if you put that in there, say, look, this is our main drag to, to the state.
To the state.
And half moon. I was just gonna say half moon in.
And say, look, we need this, this is, and pretty bad too.
I mean, just, just put a little blurb in there, fucking, you know?
How far from Reagan Road does the town, right here, we don't, that's casual.
We got, uh, grants up there, the football, the pitching, and all that, so they know that it's, it needs attention, so. Hopefully it will.
Is there anything else you wanna smell?
The, the yellow that you got planned for this year, it's a little over, it's a little over the hundred and eighty thousand.
It is.
With the fifty, I don't think.
And the fifty.
With the fifty, that, that's a little presumptuous, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, what, the taxpayer.
It's, I mean, year five, we got it at three eighty-five, I, I see this kind of as a living document, we do, we, we do what we can, and if we can't, we bump it up.
Yep, that's fine, I just show everybody.
What I'd like to see, after, after the election in March, and if it goes through, let's jump on a paving company and get them in here, so we can start this stuff. I mean, you really can't do that until June or July, but, um, even if they come in like the last two weeks in June to start, and then we can start paying them in July. They get ahead of the state work.
That's why, that's why I had Mike come in.
Yeah, because once the state worked, they got a lot of, they couldn't finish last year, they got a lot, you know, you take this road here that they're gonna do, and we really gotta kinda jump on them quick. And with that kind of money, they make it right in there.
Oh, my, Harry said, but, I mean, they're already gonna be here, cause they're gonna take this route, but, so that's gonna save us some money, cause they don't have to truck this stuff in.
Don't have to move the stuff around, that's right.
Um, one question on Carnarvon, you've got, you got it at thirty-two, what does that represent?
That's milling that.
That is, okay, good, good.
Have you checked to see if that water line, the water mains been repaired upon High Street or the galvanized dish?
Well, we know, John. It breaks, we know it hadn't.
It won't break until we get a tape.
Next, we do need a list of all the catch basins, culverts, everything under there you wanna fix in the next, in the spring.
I think those are pretty good, there's one right there by High Street that needs to be reset.
Yep.
They made that street over, they did a lot of that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's where the, too much galvanized auto man.
Right, I mean, anything you're planning on, we should make sure in the spring we move on it.
Other questions, comments?
Thanks. Are you looking for?
It is, nice, nice to see, it really is.
I would go to, we all went over it, the whole crew was here, talking over.
They comfortable with it?
Yeah, that's a good pull.
Everybody put their input in on it, and, yeah.
If you guys are happy with this, this was what we'll do.
Yeah.
You know what? Just to rip, just to see it in writing.
It's a good plan, I, I appreciate that.
Obviously something comes up, you're gonna shuffle, and you're gonna, you know, chuck and jive, but, but it's to have it there, and, and you know what you're working on, and.
If there's extra, that's one I'd like to see, John. Of course.
Oh, yeah.
Any other comments?
Not very much.
Oh, that's just a shim.
This shim, no one. Well, it's a pretty decent shape, other way they dug up to the.
Yeah, just, yeah, just clean it up a little bit, that's all you gotta do.
Yeah.
So they don't move that.
Is that it? And moving along, get you out of here finally, solar?
Solar.
Thanks for waiting. Okay, you're on.
Joe's on, or. Yeah, so, we talked about this previously, um, it's a letter, uh, up to the Public Utility Commission, uh, from the Board of Selectmen, of, I don't wanna say approving, if that's the right word, but recommending this solar project move forward here in town on an old slate quarry. And Pete is here, Brian, M H G Solar, if you have questions.
Yeah.
So, there's a, there's a, our, what's our input, I mean?
Yeah, so, we get a certificate of public good from the state, this is on our slate pile, so we could just go do that without the town's input, uh, but the way we prefer to do this is come to the towns, go, we try to get the town to support it, get the regional planning commission to support it. The project can go ahead without your support, uh, but we've just never done it that way, so, you know, you guys are a party to the, to the proceedings because it's in your town, so we usually come, try to hear objections, questions, try to take that into account for our designs and site locations, um, and go forward, try, makes our permitting process a lot smoother at the tail end, so we're not having people pop up later, like, hey, we, we didn't know about this, you didn't tell us you were doing it. it. So we show up, as we have previously, tell you guys what we're up to, this is sort of an outgrowth of everything else we've been doing in the Slate Valley with all of our solar projects, this one happens to be just on your side of the town line, uh, it is on a different circuit to take that conversation, it's not hitting your substation, but, you know, it isn't, it is on town property, it's a parcel that's in your town, so we're here asking for your support, um, for the project, and really, it's just, it's part of our, our warning, our education, and our communication process on it, that's, that's, that's why we're here. And happy to ask questions, I have a, a big layout.
Where is it?
Yeah, it's, it's right where we're evergreen in our road.
Mahar Road.
Mahar Road.
Yeah, okay.
Um, it's a, it's quarry, right up on, you can't see it from the road, if you look behind on the map, there's the, kind of the triangle down there, it's like eighty.
Between Dick Walker Sawmill Road and Ruby Quarry.
Sawmill, yeah, yep. Yep, and so the access road winds kind of parallel to the road and it cuts back up, and the quarry itself sits probably, I brought it, so I'll show you, this is, this is generally the layout, so you see, this is, you know, I'm out there, um, we tried to show the whole parcel, just because this shows the boundaries, but, um, basically, this is the old, these are the old quarry holes, these are the slate piles, the mill, the old mill that's abandoned is underneath there, this is the access road, comes up, so like Atticus here, Sheldon's here, a lot of abandoned stuff here, and I think the sawmill down here, roughly, so it's just under four acres, it's already pretty flat, it won't really require a whole lot of grading or the work.
How are you gonna get the pulse to stand up in the slate?
Three phase, oh, three phase line runs right to the old mill, actually, so it's a pretty good site from that standpoint. We've done other projects, thank you, um, uh, we've done the projects where we've added to, we've done a lot of these now, um, we do the bring excavator in, dig a hole for the last pole, uh, or what we've been doing a lot of is, we come down with power, so we get GMP to go as close to the pile as possible, then we dig a trench and we bury our conduit, and we go to them as opposed to them coming up to us, sort of depends on the pile, um, and how it was constructed and how it grades out, but that's kind of the way we've solved it, depending on the situation.
This is, so this is back, so you're not gonna see it from the road?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's invisible from standing on the site.
That's, no.
You can't see it.
No, there is.
Unless you're standing at, physically at the solar project, like we're flying over in an airplane, I sent you a drone picture of it, but that's about the only advantage point they'll ever have of it.
I have no problem.
No, that's good.
I think it's a perfect place.
We're trying.
Yeah.
So.
Good.
Don't forget, we need a, we need a motion, we need a decision.
So, so you're looking for a, I'll make a motion that within, it's less, to sign the letter, Bob needs to sign the letter of support for this solar project that will be on Mahar Road?
Yes.
Is it? Okay.
Second, well, he did, so that's okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Good.
Um, do you have any other projects?
Uh, we're thinking about doing one, trying to maybe do one up on Scott Hill, actually, there's a corner there that we're talking to the other, the other half. Yeah, um, so we're hopeful that's early, we'll be back with that one if, if it moves forward, uh, and then, got some other, that's, that's, I think in your, I think in Fairhaven, those are the only two that I'm aware of that probably fit our criteria, just the three phase here is, is really restrictive still, if you can't, that's why we're right on the town.
I saw a brand new transformer going down to the substation, uh, by the grade school, back to grade school, on Cottage, Cottage Street.
Yeah, probably, there's a lot of work going on, we've, we've put a fair amount of infrastructure in for our, our public projects, uh, so, the grid's getting upgraded, but, not very efficient.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And I would say that one, the one on Scott Hill, make it so I don't see it when I'm on, when late.
Yeah.
Is that gonna be, is that gonna be between Scott Hill and, and the Towne Castle and Town Line?
Uh, I mean, the, the current idea, like you said, it's, it's early days, um, but the current idea would be to take, if you drive up there, you'll see there's a little quarry hole that kinda rises up, and then there's one that's set back and kinda punches into the park a little bit, happens to be in a pretty good shape, we, we have to see half of it's pretty good, the other half probably needs some civil work, so it's gonna take some engineering to figure out exactly where it goes and what it finally looks like, but the, the idea would be just like all of our other projects, just to find the old, the old Towne's pile, that's just sitting there being unused and massage it a little bit and see if it can hold the project up.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Might find some Indian arrowheads.
We try to dig deep enough to find those.
If you don't even wanna talk about that.
We just stare it on the surface, right on top of the rocks, that's, that's the radio.
Chingers, what was that?
Can you get those handed now, that'll be a little more sensitive.
No, we'll get it.
Be careful on that quarry side, because there's been known to buy those things with those yellow ends on the end of their tail, all those rattlesnake.
Oh, I'm surprised I've never seen them on piles, but.
You're working around there, you'll never get near them, you'll scare them away.
You'll hear your rattling, and they'll be gone.
They're like the sawmill. They're like the sawmill, I would keep your eyes open.
They're in competition with the noise from the saw.
That's true, that must be it.
Oh.
Some of your, some of your forbearers told me that.
Yes, yes, these do not care about.
All it does is you don't bother them things.
Yeah.
Water bottling plant, unless we have anything else on the salt.
What kind of bottling are we gonna put the water in?
Oh, calm down. Um, yeah, so we reached out to USD, USDA, I think it was. I might give my, I might have my, either way, it was, it's one of those federal agencies, um, and there's a grant to do a study to see if we can make money bottling our town water.
Aren't we prohibited for, towns prohibited from making money?
It's a enterprise fund, so you can make money.
That would pay for the infrastructure now there.
Well, that'd be a help, that's for sure. I'm not saying I'm against it, I just don't wanna get in trouble.
It's worth a try. And you have to know.
Yeah, so that, we do have capacity, but I would.
I've even got the name for it. Mr. Inman's Pond Water.
I don't know that, that's something pond or.
No, no.
Right market strategy.
Fresh, fresh sparkling spring water.
Sparkly wine. Um, I, I have reached out to, uh, DuBois and King to get a, get a price point, just a, a rough estimate, they haven't got back with me yet, um, today, I'm asking for the board's approval to up, to just submit a, an intent to apply, uh, with a ten thousand dollar match, not to exceed, which would come from the waters, the water capital reserve.
How much do we have in that now?
It's good, I'll, I'll second that.
Who's second?
Jay. Jay, Glenn.
We're making money.
Is there any other discussion? This is a study, this is, uh.
Gotta start somewhere.
Not actually doing anything, then we would, we would proceed from there.
Yes.
Now, is the grant, do you have to have like a private public kind of, uh, idea? I mean, like, somebody would come in and bottle the water, it isn't like we're gonna start a bottling plant ourselves, right?
It's, I'm asking for, uh, to them to look at it both ways, can, can the town do it themselves, and, or would it be more beneficial to have a public-private partnership, where we have space and water, and then somebody comes in and manages it?
Yeah.
Or have somebody move a truck and just haul it out.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's big now.
Which would be ideal, yeah.
Because there's a place up in, in Yosemite Mountain, that's all they do, they load their trailer and they take it up to New York City, and they, they process the water down there.
But they were permitted before.
Right.
All the rules, you can't do that anymore.
That's probably true.
That's spring water, I think.
Well.
Pittsburgh, Pittsfield.
Yeah, they, they drill right next to the river.
What, what happens up in Timliff with?
They're calling it spring water.
Yeah, right.
Up in Timliff there, Glenn Merrill, he's got a water project going up there, you know he's gone.
Yep.
All right, well, so this is the initial phase, see what, if, if it's doable, everybody understanding what we're voting on?
Turn to the left, turn to the right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed?
Can't get there for it, I'm trying.
Can't get there.
Good.
Done pretty good tonight, I haven't voted against anyone.
There's plenty in town, yeah, a lot of town.
Well, oh, yeah.
You may have influenced.
Oh, it didn't count, that wasn't a real vote, that was, you're still all consensus now, it's a good meeting.
One ninety-one Airport Road.
Yep, so, uh, one of the town trucks clipped the mailbox at one ninety-one Airport Road, which is the granddaughter of John Lulick, Mr. Lulick wants the town to replace the mailbox, uh, I have talked to the owner and let the owner know that if the mailbox is replaced, we will pay for that, which is standard practice.
And my grandmother, daughter, told me to tell you that she didn't have it, that mailbox, it was smashed, until the town truck smashed it, and she feels that seeing how the town truck smashed it, that the town people should go and get another mailbox, like the one she's got, and replace it, like it was done in the past, Mr. Kerber replaced it, put the number on it, and that's the way it's gonna be.
Calm down there, John, you're, you're almost, you're almost in conflict of interest, but.
That would be my question on this one, what is past, whenever you run into one, he's right here, I'd have to ask, not, being, I'm playing the newbie card, the rookie card again here, what's past, what's our past practice?
I'm not gonna be able to use it while you got it.
Do that, I'm gonna use it as soon as I can, what's our past practice in town?
Past, you do, you do, if there's no way, somebody can take them and get them, put it back on. I was driving the truck young.
Does it make any difference who was driving?
I hit it, when I went up and measured it, you got twelve feet from center line to your mailbox.
That's where the state, that's where the fir-, I got the thing right here, if you wanna hear it.
I know, but you're cutting eleven feet with the plow by itself, so do we go off into the other, over the other line to miss the mailbox, or do, do we get together and move your mailbox back like everybody else has on Airport Road?
And something.
And maybe you don't have this plow.
Something else, too, this plow don't hit the mailboxes, it's the, the snow coming off the plow that does the damage in the mailboxes.
Well, this one I did put it.
You did put it.
I clipped it with the wing.
You don't, what, it happened?
It was, I was driving, I.
How does the owner feel when you ask them about moving it back a little bit? Did you talk to the owner?
I haven't talked to her.
That, that would be.
Everybody else has them off two, two or three feet.
The tree for that is that the post office gets.
There's the grass on the edge of the road, and that's how far the back of the mailbox is from the edge of the road.
One of those things, I mean.
Well, it's, measurement, it doesn't matter where the grass is, I mean, the grass comes a little farther there or something, I don't know, uh.
I, I would, my suggestion, measure from the center of the road to where our right of way is, and what the town, what the post office says has to be done, and do it that way. If, I still think, well, we talk to the people, you and the people talk, and, and then just see if you can, even if you have to put a little bit of gravel in, in front of the mailbox, so you can move the mailbox back a little bit, so it's not that close to the road. I think it's a very fixable, easy situation that nobody should get excited about.
Right, we should, we do the right thing.
And if, if it's as simple as just finding a mailbox, hey, I'm white, why, why don't we do that? How do you get it over?
When I, I used, I worked, I called this one for eleven or twelve years when I worked in Castle, if we knocked one down in the wintertime, we'd go up, get a five gallon bucket, and put a post in it, put a mailbox on it so they could receive your mail, and then springtime, we went back and took care of it.
I don't think that's.
I mean, that's the easiest situation, that's the easiest way to take care of something.
It is.
I mean, they got their, they get their mail, we can't stop them from getting their mail, and just put a five gallon bucket, stick a mailbox in it.
The post is good. I didn't break the post, I just clipped the.
Just clipped the mailbox.
The doors.
Door shouldn't have been, door was probably open, so it's not your fault.
No.
Oh, it was.
Flag was up, distracted.
What is it?
Something.
Do we usually not replace mailboxes?
No.
No, we, we pay to replace mailboxes.
Oh.
If, if we went out there and replaced this mailbox, it would be going against what we had done in the last two years since then.
Wait, wait, say that again.
We don't, we physically don't replace mailboxes, we pay for mailboxes to be replaced. If I sent town crew up to replace this mailbox, it would be going against Pat's practice, and it would look like we were doing it because of select.
Me, me, I add that. Send them on, fix my fence.
May I add that?
Well, they're supposed to fix your fence anyway.
Or, so, if, if somebody pops a tire, does that mean that they should call the town and say, hey, I hit a bolt, come on your fence?
Aaron Kerber smashed that mailbox previously, and he went up and replaced it.
Well, John, you know.
Well, if they did it wrong, doesn't mean we should do it wrong again, I'll give you that.
John, I think the situation is gonna be taken care of, I don't think we should sit here and argue.
I don't either.
It's a, it's a mailbox, it's not like they ran over their dog, you know, or something like that, no, but you know what I'm saying, I mean, it's a mailbox, we can take care of the mailbox, we can get, get something up there so they can get your mail, springtime go back.
I think six.
Springtime we can go back and take care of it.
Well, yes, what I'm saying is, Joe says it's just, we pay for the mailbox, is that the answer?
But, but, my, my question, and I, I appreciate the practice since Joe has been here, but I'm saying, this is Fair Haven, when we've knocked mailboxes, I gotta believe we've knocked mailboxes over, in the last thirty years, what have we done? And if we've gone and re, and replaced it as a town, and then, two years ago, we stopped and said, new sheriff in town, the rules have changed, this is what we're doing, I can understand now why you probably have a taxpayer saying, what the heck are you doing? Changing the rules, I'm not being treated fairly based on how everyone else was treated, so.
I don't think, I don't think they have done it in the past, replaced, they, we bought them, but we didn't replace.
You didn't put them, we've probably done everything across, I'm.
Didn't put them on the post, we bought them for the.
If I had new mailboxes and set it on their door. Right?
There's the mailbox, and you got that much grass in front of it.
Here's your money.
Here's your money.
Buy, buy a mailbox, here's your money. And I, and I talked to Jenny to get a sense of what we were doing in the past, she's been here for 16 years.
That's right.
She said we have never gone out and replaced a mailbox.
That's important to know.
We just don't do that.
All right, then, let's do.
Follow our.
And that's what we're doing, we're following what we've always done.
All right, that'll be a good job for you, John. We'll get a mailbox, you will put it up.
Moving on.
No, no. Yeah, he can do it, because it's his granddaughter.
I'll have to weld it to the bolts.
It's a, it's a family thing.
And on the other, on, if you, if you raise the, if you raise it up, because I think the, the, the post office has it at 32 inches, it's supposed to be at 42 inches.
I got the regulations out in the truck.
And the wing would guard underneath it, the one hit it.
How high is the wing?
Would guard underneath it, the wing's only 32 inches. So you've got 10 inches to play with. That one is down low, it's, it's not going to hurt you about it, but it's.
Too late.
There it is.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna pay for a mailbox.
We're gonna pay, we're gonna follow our practice.
We're gonna follow, follow, follow the thing.
That's.
All right.
Road and Bridge Standards.
So this is an annual thing that the state, V-Trans gives us, I have two. Uh, one copy says the town board understands the, the road and bridge standards, and the other is the actual standards themselves.
Haven't we done this previously, every year after year?
Every year, they send them, yeah.
Also to sign the road and bridge standards.
You caught me the first time.
I'll second that.
Roads and Bridge Standards.
To accept the.
Accept them.
Does that list, does that list the miles?
No, but I do have that, but it came.
That's coming, that, that comes with it, doesn't it?
But it's the right number of miles and the right number of each class.
I, we have to tell them, and there was, there will be no change this year.
Well, we were talking about maybe taking a road.
Yeah, we're gonna have to take, because we're taking that this year.
It's, it's, this is, this is due in February. So it's, it's gonna be, yeah.
Did you get a favorable vote on that, Claire?
I didn't get a vote at all.
I didn't think so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All those opposed? All right, and we have a application, appointment to the Economic Development Corp.
Committee?
Yes, the, the young lady that owns the Rosewood Cafe, or the kind of way it used to be, um, she'd like to take part. She would like to join the Economic Development Committee, and her name is Deborah Fallon.
I'll make a motion, we, we appoint her to it. Second.
Go with that, it's good to have another person on.
We wanted to get back to the five.
She seems pretty interested, too.
We, we're actually talking as a committee about, uh, do we, do we, uh, want one or two more? An odd number even, so absolutely to come back to this and hers, a good thing.
Deborah Fallon, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we got another volunteer.
How do you spell her last name, Joe?
F-A-L-L-O-N.
Um, the parking lot, what do you got, and anybody got anything that? You got any comments?
We can take the payment schedule out of here.
Payment schedule is good.
Kevin Street.
Did we ever cap the reserve funds?
No, we haven't done that yet.
Not firearms, just our, our.
That's a discussion we're gonna need some time to deal with. Well, we should do that. Maybe sometime in February, lock off a little bit of time. For, to, for the capping reserve funds. Yes, because there's a, there's a few of them and.
Some of them are kind of high, excessive. Well, then again, maybe they need to be, I don't know.
We've been talking about it for three years, four years.
Not as high as they used to be.
No, they're not.
Well, we can, we.
No, they're not. But there is a, there should be some place, some.
One quick question, Bill, when we talked about the firearms, were you gonna look into something on?
We have a one.
But this got some mistakes and.
No, all this is a draft.
Okay.
It was a draft.
No, I talked to Bonnie.
Somebody take it, mark it up, one thing Bonnie, Bonnie pointed out to me yesterday, and we talked about it, was if you guys were to adopt it, she pointed out like, it's a town, so I suggested that you put within the bill's limits.
Right. It's got, it's got a place like, where it says north or west, rather than it should say north, whatever.
All that is is a working document, if you guys decide to go that, and we're serious about doing it, that was a guideline for you to look at.
So if you, if, even if they put it in the village area, that'd take care of just the park and this.
It would take care of your village, it's a residential area.
It's almost delineated in a.
If we did the town, we wouldn't be able to hunt behind a, they wouldn't be able to hunt behind the cemetery, or up on the hill, cross the road from me. So it would, should say just village.
Within the village limits.
Within the village limits.
Bonnie did a pretty good job of delineating an area.
We just need to pull that out.
I am, I am good, wouldn't, did you get that?
I'm sure we got it, but I need to know.
I do feel.
On the others, on, on the other side, there's very few complaints for that. You have the one that got, that light has gotten brought up again, so we've talked about this, I think three times in my tenure, and I've been here 15 years, so. It would be something you guys want, I'm not opposed to it if you want to do it, I'm not a percent for it either, just because I don't, there's been, hasn't been a lot of call for that, so. Uh, that's why we get a working document for you guys to look at with proposal, because it was, um, I can't remember what any of you talked about, was some interest in doing it. I thought we did, when I first started here, I thought we had one.
Yeah, because I knew you checked in.
Well, I remember I asked you about the gentleman, Dell passed me across the river, the captain of the rail bag down there, on Barstool's place there, he was shooting down there, I already got a AR-123.
That would fall within the village if we were to adopt something like that.
Yeah, but if the, if we had something just together on file, for all of a sudden, it came to a problem that you can make it a policy.
Yeah, and we, yeah, we already have a basically, just like John said, and, uh, just to be looked at, tightened up a little bit, the outline is there, it would take 60 days for you guys to.
Right.
We can have it up to you within a week to have it for approval, and then 60 days out if you chose to do it.
I think that's what we should look at, I mean, just have it there, so if we really think there's a problem, we can just jump on it.
So now I have to find it?
I may need another copy.
Yeah, I have to.
Maybe you should make us all another copy.
Pretty sure I did a little purging the other day.
You think? I've done that occasionally.
So, so on your, on the parking lot, um, I was gonna bring the personnel policy up pretty, pretty quick. Uh, the capital reserve, um, cap, and then I'm gonna put Lewis Lane in there, because I know the board was interested in taking that, and that's a process, that's a, that's a multi-week or month process, so if we want to do that, we gotta get moving on it.
The, um, I, I'll tell you right now that, that one of the owners is in Florida until, Jake Mabes is in Florida until warmer times.
April, probably.
April, easily, maybe, maybe later, but, so, he'll want to be involved. And his son is, his son is part owner, so he'll have to be involved.
See, we used to just take care of the straight end though, didn't we? We never did around it. Did the whole thing?
And then I found out it wasn't even a road.
Yeah, I know. If, if you get a chance to look at it and see what the.
Yeah, I think if we just did a straight end job, you know.
Absolutely, what was sable before, raw now. There's three more lots. Yeah, I'm not, Joe, it's all, yeah.
You'd want to go from that earth and see what we're doing.
Yeah, and see what, what needs to be done, if it's, if it's, I mean, I don't want to get in a situation like this way, that way avenue, we, we got ourselves a big enough boat there.
Well, that's, that's telling Joe, I mean, it's, if you want the state to give you money, you, they gotta bring it up to code. You can't just take a road.
Oh, I know, we get. That's what happened, that's what happened in this way, that way avenue.
You want to test it, see how much gravel's here.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't want, I don't want it to be to code. Yeah, because we, we didn't do that, we've got a mud pit out there. Okay. Word roundtable?
I have nothing.
John?
Where the flag to one, the new fire truck is? Something backed into the edge of the door case in there, and there was insulation stuffed in around it and stuff there to plug up the hole and stuff. I don't, I don't remember anybody telling us anything that happened there, so.
This year?
Fire station. The door where the new fire truck is, overhead door. You see the flatboard, and they got a whole bunch of insulation stuff there, it's been there a while, because it's all fitted.
Joe's better guy coming to look at the building anyway.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up, you know, do it all at once.
But, but it did last year.
Yeah, he put it.
Nothing, nothing this year.
No, it happened before this, been there evidently quite a while.
Yeah, but, but it did that last year.
Oh, I thought we were gonna send the fire department to drive in school again. Guess not.
We got four.
With a white sign. Sirens going.
You have a great night, good luck in town.
We aren't going there either, Bob. Maybe we should have. That's it.
John, what's the price on the property on South Main Street?
Uh, 44,500, 44,500. Is the asking price.
Have we had any offers?
Well, we've had, uh, a few people hit it, no, no takers yet, but yeah, we've, we've been approached several times.
What property is that?
South Main Street, the Green Year property.
Oh, I did have one thing. Do we have more tax sales planned?
Um, I'm working on them, yeah, they're coming, we're trying to get through this backlog.
No? No, I'm just wondering if, 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 uh, if it's been appraised, to see if that's more than what we should be asking for, or, I'd just like to see the property moved, you know, I mean, to get, recoup our money. But we know what we got invested, you know, I mean, if we can get, get our money back and get somebody in there so it's back in the tax roll, um, maybe we should look at the price and just see, you know, if we can get an actual appraisal on it or something.
Yeah. It's a halfway decent piece of property.
It is a good piece of property.
You know who did that, Joe?
And I think, you know, if somebody was to buy it, just cut that brush out, that bank and stuff, you know, it'd look nice right up there. It's a, it is a nice piece of property on top. But I mean, I just, to make it a little more appealing maybe, to get somebody in there, I like, I'd just like to see it back in our tax rolls. That's all I got.
Um, I got one thing. John, you're spending too much time in the office.
Well, man.
John, here's what I'm gonna say, you're a selectman, you're not a town manager. And, let's get to the point, you're here all the time. And it's, you're not a, you're not, our job is here. And if you're in, if you're interfering with the day-to-day business, you're not doing your job, you're doing, you're trying to do somebody else's job.
I'll, I'll stop going to news, but I did have a lot of health options, so.
Well, health options is a different story, and that's fine.
I realize, I realize.
But you, it's, I don't, I know you're, you care about this town, but it's, we, if we interfere with day-to-day, then, then we're micromanaging, we're doing all the stuff, we always get accused of. And, uh, I, I can't argue with people when, when, not that I won't.
I'm glad I'm not like that.
But if you just would try to limit a little bit, so these guys can do their job. Thanks. That's all I got.
I got one, but I talked to the salesman today, we're waiting on the other town's truck going. He thinks it should be here by the end of the.
Are we paying anything for that?
I do have one thing, but we don't have an exact.
That's all. We got one of the, on his truck.
We can do that, do it for the next time.
But he's Viking is so far behind that they.
Should we talk about just keeping this truck instead of the other one, they're the same price, right?
No.
Yeah, I thought it was older, so I thought they were real close.
Oh, there's warranty on the one where it's supposed to get.
Yeah, how many miles would he put on it this week?
Okay, I don't know, just ask.
Before we get.
No, 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 I get you.
I'm gonna see if we can get it knocked down some, because I bought a truck that I thought I could pull.
It was, you know, it was gonna, it was supposed to have been here within two weeks or three weeks, that's right.
But they have been good about letting us use this other one, so if there's no cost, it's hard to fight it too much.
Yes, let's just see what it is and make sure there's not a lot of.
If it's apples to apples, you know, they use about what we did.
I mean, this town, they want their truck too. So, you know, it's like, like I say, that, when we took the main truck up, they had 25 trucks in the yard and.
Sounds good.
Viking needs to hire some people.
Can they hire less than?
Hiring people. Checkbook status?
Checkbook, um, 1,215,277 dollars and 49 cents. And a motion to pay the payroll warrant, 31,272 dollars and 68 cents.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pay the general fund warrant, 129,154 dollars and 20 cents. And there's, uh, there's about 8,000 in there for the brine sprayer, 13,000 of it's salt, and 30, about 29,000 for mechanic street, which is what lifted it up a little bit.
Okay.
All those favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Uh, we do not have an executive session, so.
Then I'll make a motion.
We have, we have a meeting on Thursday at 7:00.
You can have, that's in hell of a dog.
You gonna make a motion?
Motion to observe a hearing.
Favor? We're out of here.